Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad you're here today.
We also have Julie and Colin from our team. Hey guys.
How's it going?
We are excited to have you here today where we are going to be talking about brand palettes. We'll learn what a brand palette is, why you need one as a brand partner, and how you can set yours up and get started using it. So if you have a website, if you want a website, this is going to be absolutely critical for you. But even if you don't have a website yet and you're utilizing social media, having your brand figured out, including the colors, maybe even especially in some cases, the colors are going to go a long way to help increase the impact that you're making with your efforts in your business. A brand is a phenomenon that allows you to really harness the sort of psychological powers of influence. And if your brand is consistent and you're showing it consistently with that brand, you get to really pull on the same strings that some of the name brands that we're all familiar with do, that influence us to listen, to pay attention, and of course, to make buying decisions. So we're going to get into all of that here today. As you're coming in, let us know in the chat where you're coming in from. We're certainly excited to have you here wherever you are in the world. We are live every Thursday at noon Eastern US time. And this is an opportunity to work together on your young living business as well as your website and systems that you may have with Get Oiling. So I'm going to go ahead as well as the team and pop out a video, get into our slides for today before we actually go and share the steps of what we'll do. And we'll be doing a lot of sort of show and tell here today where we will be learning how to set these things up and including some guidelines on how to choose your colors and of course, getting those colors established in your system. So again, welcome. We're going to talk about creating and using a brand palette with Get Oiling. And today we're also going to be utilizing Canva. So we're going to talk about what a brand palette is, where it's used, and how to create and use your own. And then of course, as always, we will have live help and Q and A. We do this every week. So if you are here with questions, even if they have nothing to do with today's topic, want to invite you to add those questions to the Q and A now. We are here to help you live on this call. And if you would like to join us in the future on a call like this, maybe you're in our Facebook group watching this right now or you're checking this out as a replay, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list, be notified, and join us on Zoom every Thursday. If you would like to work together on a live call like this one, you can go to getoiling.com/web site review and you can set aside dedicated space on a call like this. Or if you would like to have someone do work for you, if you don't just want help, you want things done, you can go to getoiling.com/concierge, meet our team and request a quote for your next project. So let's talk about brand palettes. A brand palette is essentially a color palette that you are going to use as a personal brand. So every brand that exists has a range of colors that they use, right? When you think about a sports team, you think about the primary colors that they use in their logo, in their uniforms, right? You're going to see it on all of the merchandise and you can easily and quickly identify which team that is by that combination of shades and colors. There are some brands who have actually even trademarked their colors. So thinking about like T-Mobile, that bright pink color that you see with T-Mobile, they've actually paid to trademark or copyright that color. So no one else can use that color pink, right? And we can easily associate a brand and then everything else that that brand stands for by simply observing and then of course, recalling to our memory all of the emotions, thoughts, feelings, et cetera, we have about a brand when we see those colors, when we see the logos, when we see at the visual elements of a brand. So a brand palette allows you to begin harnessing some of the power that those brands do to cultivate influence and of course, to build trust with the people that you are looking to attract and influence online. So the basics of a brand palette are as follows, actually quite simple. And we'll talk about how you can set and up and use yours here today. First things first, we want to have a maximum of about five or six colors, right? So a brand palette is going to not be tons of colors. It's just going to be a few and one to three. So maybe one, two, or three of those colors are going to be your brand's main colors. So these may be the colors you use in your logo or the primary colors that you use throughout your site. And by primary, I do not mean red, yellow, blue, I mean top level, right? So the ones that you use the most. And then of course, the remainder of those colors in the palette are going to be supporting colors. Now you're going to use these differently on your website, of course, depending on what your palette looks like. And you'll use them in lots of other places as well. Now, if you're using bold colors or colors that contrast each other in a very high level, right? So if you're using, you know, a red and a blue and they're both the very bold versions of a red and a blue or a red and a yellow, right? You want to make sure that if you're using bolder, high contrast colors, that you're also utilizing a lot of negative space for visual balance. So what that means is, is that if you have maybe your primary brand colors are black and a really bright yellow, that's very high contrast and quite bold, right? Then we're going to want to have the majority of the space on your, the visual space on your website or in documents that you're creating to maybe be white. Right? Because we don't want to tire the eye with, with an overload of colors. We want to create visual balance and we're going to achieve that by utilizing negative space. Similarly, if your palette is, is very bright, if you've got a bright turquoise, a bright pink, a bright orange, and these are all colors that you utilize in your palette, you're going to want to make sure that you are using again, a lot of negative space. Because the last thing that we want to do is to get so busy with our colors that they detract from what we're trying to say, right? Ultimately, what our goal is to get people to pay attention, be influenced and take action, right? So if we're distracting them or tiring their eyes and their brains out with a volume of contrasting colors, then they're not even going to stick around and take in the meaning of what we are saying. Does that make sense? And then finally, what we're going to want to make sure that we do is to keep our color use consistent across all channels. So if there is a green color in your color palette and you use that in your logo, that is the same green color you want to be using as a button on your website. Not a different color green, but that exact same color green. If you're going to use green as part of some font in an image you create, you want to use that exact same green. So if you're going to be showing up on social media, that same set of colors that you're using primarily in the images that you're creating or other ways that you can utilize, I know on Instagram, you can do a lot with those colors. You want to make sure that those are the same as they are on your website, the same as on your business card, et cetera. And above all else, remember, less is more. With colors, we want to give an idea of who we are so that when we show up consistently, those associations can be made on a subconscious level with the people that we're looking to connect with and influence online. But if we get too busy with it, again, we can distract from all of the important things that we're doing. All right. Now let's talk about where we use our brand palette. Number one, you're going to use this throughout your website. This may be background section colors. It might be buttons on your site. It certainly will be buttons on your site. Maybe your font colors on your website, lots of different places, this is going to show up. You'll also use these colors in your logo as well as the Favacon, which is just that tiny image that you can see when you're in a browser that typically displays a logo for a business when you're on their website. You'll also utilize these in your social profiles wherever you would be introducing colors and so on. You'll also use these in your visual content. So if you have a thumbnail for a video or a featured image for a blog post, maybe an image that you want to use, you know, in a section on your website. Maybe this is a post that you're making and you're delivering a quote in this content. Maybe the background of it, that's one of the colors from your palette, right? So lots of different places that you will be utilizing this palette. And it doesn't just extend to your online presence in terms of websites and social media profiles. You'll also use the same color palette if you create a lead magnet, for instance, and, and you want to have a digital download. Or if you are creating flyers that are being used, you have an opportunity everywhere you show up to put the stamp of your brand wherever you are. And that again, is just going to increase the efficacy of what you're doing because of the phenomenon of, you know, of how people are influenced by brands. So let's talk about how we will set ours up. The first thing that we will do is choose our colors that we'll use in our palette. Then we will use these colors to set up our brand kit in Canva. And then you also do have an option, if you don't have Canva Pro, which I will be demonstrating today, you do have the option as well to create and download a brand guideline. And then finally, we can add those colors and, and we can put those onto our colors and fonts page in Get Oiling where you're able to basically create the presets for the entirety of your Get Oiling website. So let's go and create one. What we're going to do first is I'm going to head over to Canva and show you where I'm going to put this stuff and also show you what you can use alternately. Because as we are choosing our colors, we want to be adding those colors into the tool that we're ultimately going to use. So I like as a starting point, using the brand features in Canva if you have Canva Pro. So what you can do here is create a brand kit. And you can actually see there's several here. Here's one that I created previously where we have the logos for Jane and we have her color palette. So you can actually go and create a new palette here in, I'll go to see all. And then I think from there, I should be able to add a new one. Here we go, add new. So I'm going to call this my brand kit and hit create. And this of course, is where again, you can collect all of the important aspects of your brand. So your logos as well as your fonts, any graphics, icons, et cetera. Lots of really cool tools here. Now, if you do not have Canva Pro and you do not plan to get Canva Pro, we do have, and I'll go ahead and open this and show you a free template that we will give you. This is actually from Jessica, one of the designers on our team. And you can utilize this template in Canva. And you do not have to have Canva Pro to use this. Essentially what you would be doing here, instead of going in and adding colors to your color palette in Canva, just like you can do here, you would be adding those colors here and actually heading over here and typing in the, the color that you plan to use. Then this would be something that you can download as a PDF and use in our next step when we actually go over to the, to your Get Oiling site and input your colors. Now I'm going to be using, like I mentioned, this Canva brand kit because this makes your life super easy. If you were to create a design, let's just say I'm going to create a logo here. You can see that when I go into my elements and maybe I want to use a circle here. If I want to use a particular color from my, my brand palette, it's going to auto populate here. This is the value of using Canva Pro's feature. Cause whatever you have here in your palette, you're going to be able to choose and use over here, right? So that's really the main thing. If you don't have Canva Pro, it is something that we highly recommend. It's about, I want to say it's like 112 a year, $112 a year for the whole year. And you have all of your brand tools really right here in one place. And there are excellent ways to plug Canva in to your Get Oiling. So it's very useful, highly recommend it. But again, as an alternative, you could use this brand guideline. And we'll be sure to add the, the link to this template in the chat. So you guys can grab it and I'll put it in the description on our YouTube video for the replay as well. All right. So what if you don't know what you want in terms of colors? What I recommend that you do is play around with some colors and, and see what you like together. And I would absolutely recommend going and looking at other brands that inspire you. Really think about, you know, what kind of color combinations really speak to you. So if you want, you can also just head over to Google and type in Canva Palette Generator. And actually, I believe that's just canva.com/colors. And what you could do here is actually upload a photo and it will generate a palette for you based on that photo. This is a really great place to start. Maybe there's a, a landscape. If you're a very nature oriented person, you could upload a landscape and then you could have colors generated from that image. Another one that I particularly love is Coolers, C-O-O-L-O-R-S dot C-O. This is a palette generator that you can use. So I'm going to go over here and hit start the generator. And here we can just kind of cycle through and see colors that we might like. So here, let me pop out of here real quick. I'm going to hit the spacebar. Every time I hit the spacebar, it gives me a new palette. And they're all pretty great. There's, these are, these are all awesome. I'll go ahead and use this one. This is actually a pretty solid example of, you know, we do have some contrast here, but the tones really all go well together. The level of saturation across these colors is pretty even. And you have a nice, you know, just sort of a nice cross section of colors. So maybe I love this palette and I would like to use this palette for my brand. So we have a five colors. It's a great number. So I'm going to select this color and I'm going to copy this right here, this, this number. And then I'm going to head over here to my brand kit. And I'm going to type that number in or paste it in this case in. So I'm going to come back over here and just repeat that for each of these colors. And I'll show you in just a second how you can do this as well. If you're using the, the non-Pro version option of this, if you're going to use that PDF that Jessica created, I'll show you how you can do that as well. All right. So this one is white. I'm going to go ahead and copy this one as well. Okay. So our next one here is white. And the next one, final one here is this orange. Okay. So we now have our colors set up here. If you wanted to use this brand guideline template, the other option that you have here is again, to go in and just paste in those colors so that you can add them. So it's, it's essentially the same thing. The step is just going to be that you're going to copy from your, your source. And then you can head over to your document and then select the item whose color you want to change. So here's this one. And then up here, you're going to paste in that color. Right? And then of course, you can repeat this for all of the colors in your palette. And here I would recommend as well, if you're, if you are setting up the brand guideline like this in a PDF format, and this is a great thing to set up as well. If you would like to hire someone to do work for you or you could actually hire someone from our team to create one of these for you as well, including creating your logos and things like that. But if you wanted to hand off, you know, a logo task to a graphic designer, then you would want to have something like this that you could give them. If you wanted to hire someone to run your social media for you or to design things for your website, this is the kind of thing that you would want to give them so that they have everything that they need to represent your brand effectively. So we've got our colors set up over here in our palette. Let's go see how we can set these up inside of our Get Oiling system. So in Get Oiling, you are able to, right over here under website and blog, go to colors and fonts. And then once you're here, you can select brand colors and you can go in and make your changes. Now really quickly, want to make sure that you understand what each of these are and how they'll show up on your website. So this would be the color of your links. So if we actually go to view Jane's site and you view hyperlink text, and I'm actually not 100% sure that I have hyperlink text here. But you can actually see, so do you see how when I hover over the menu items, they turn this teal color? I'll show you where that shows up. That's this menu text hover here. And then you can see that that's the color of the menu text. But you know how when you are looking at say, an email that gets sent to you and, and the color of the link is different from the color of the text that's next to it, right? So this would be the color of links that show up on your website. And then this would be the color that that link changes when you hover over it. Headlines are going to be just generally headlines on your site. And then of course, you've got your menu text, like I mentioned, and the hover. Subtext is going to be that color that shows up underneath when you, so here, if we come over here and highlight, right? Oops. You actually are going to see additional colors here as well. And this is just a great way for you to be able to go in and select from, let's just say for instance, if we were going to go into pages and we are creating a page and you want to be able to, to change your background in a section. Here, let me come in right here. I'll just add a section here and I'm going to change the background. You can actually see all of our color palette is right here available to you. So let's talk about how we set this up. If I am looking at a palette like this one, I know that I'm going to want to have the links very likely in this color and maybe, maybe have them hover a slightly different color, right? So if my links are this orange color when they hover over, maybe I make them blue or you could go vice versa. And, and how we're going to do this is, is we're going to copy the number here for this color. And then head over here and here's my link. I'm going to show colors and I'm going to paste that in. Now, if you do have a PDF version that you have, or even an image version of this that you have created, or even if you are on a desktop or a laptop and you can have two screens or two windows open at the same time, you do have the ability to change colors using a color picker here as well. So if those colors are available on the page, then you could, you could actually go and select viewing that directly. So let me come back over here. I'm going to grab this color here. I'm going to set that up here. Right? And we can go through and make all of the changes that we want here. Obviously making sure that each of these is set to a color in your palette, right? And, and listen, where we're talking about headlines and menu text and things like this, it is perfectly acceptable and I would even say preferable for you to have the majority of things like texts on your website show up as black, right? Black on a white background. Or if you know that you're going to be using, you know, dark headers and footers and you know, dark colors elsewhere, then you could certainly change these to a lighter color as well. You can also repeat. So if I want my menu text hover to be that orange as well, same as the links, I can do that too. We don't have to have tons of different colors here. So let's go over back to our brand kits. I'm going to grab our, this sort of dark navy. I'm going to add this as a secondary color. I'm going to also add that white as a secondary color. And then let me find my light gray that we'll set up and use here as well. And just make sure that you have replaced all of the colors here, even if you don't have lots of different colors. It's totally fine to, to just repeat the ones that you already have. And again, you could use the color picker tool for this. I'm on a Mac. This is going to look slightly different for you if you are not on a Mac, if you're on a PC. So that's how you set up your brand colors. The next thing that you're going to want to do is head down here to your button colors and go out and change each of these so that they all reflect your brand palette, right? So there are some instances where you do want to include something like a red, right? Red buttons are really effective on websites. So you may choose to include a red here, but maybe make that a red that is in better, maybe better keeping with this palette, something that's maybe like a deeper burgundy. So if maybe I wanted to find a color like that, that I could use, I can explore by typing in the word burgundy. Let me find a thing in Canva that I can color. I'll type in burgundy. And let's see if I can find a red that I like, that might go well with my other colors. So there's that one. I like that well enough. Let me go and add some more elements here and you can actually start playing around with these, with your colors, if you wanted to add something new or kind of determine what your additional colors might be. So all you have to do is select your image. And if you have your brand kit set up, then you can choose to go in and work with the brand kit that you have, right? So I'm going to change my color here. And I'm going to change it to, oops, that's not what I wanted to do. I'm going to change my element color. By clicking here, I'm going to close out of this and you can see the palette here. So I'll go ahead and just select the other colors in the palette. And I think, I think that's it. So now we can kind of decide, do we like that, that red? If we do, then of course, this can be the color. It's not going to be one that we use for our brand specifically, but it is one that we will use on our website because this is an example of a color that you absolutely should have somewhere on your site unless it, unless it clashes, right? Unless it specifically does not go well. You do want to have a high contrast red-ish button somewhere. It's just effective. So we've got our red and then you can go in and you can make your changes. And in this case, again, you can, you can head back over to your brand kit, copy this hex code. That's what this six letter or number combo is. So you copy that hex code. So here's our darker navy. And then we can go down here and change our button. So the reason why you want to make sure that you change each of these buttons is that these buttons actually show up in different places on your website automatically. Now, most places on your website, you do have the option to change your button out manually. So if you're creating a page, you can choose from a dropdown menu of buttons. If you're linking something, you can do that as well. But, but as an example, in your member area, for instance, this is a button. I believe this is the one that shows up, or it might be this one. I forget, but it shows up in your member area regardless. So when you are, when someone is logged in and they are maybe going to click a button to enter one of your vaults, you want to make sure that that button is one that syncs with the rest of your color palette. So you will want to follow the steps to go through each of these to make sure that you've got that setup. Now, this is a little bit of work, but once it's done, you don't have to do it again. And from there, it's incredibly easy to design on your website and to get things created the way that you want. So let's go look at a couple of places where we would utilize this. Again, going back over to pages in Get Oiling, if you wanted to create a page. And you can actually see here, there's that red color and another button up there. That's a custom button here. But if we were going to create a page, maybe I'll start from a template. I'll use, I'll use this one. So here, if you wanted to start with a template, it would be very easy for you to start modifying this so that it better suits your, your brand palette. Now I didn't actually save those changes that I made. So, so you aren't necessarily seeing all of those here, but here, let me pop in. Maybe if you, if this color green is a part of your palette, then this is now available to you. If you wanted to change this button, then you could change that very easily as well because these are all a part of your brand presets, right? If I wanted to hyperlink something, you would actually be able to see. Let me just put a pound in here and you can see that the color changes, right? And so you have that ability to make those changes and they're preset for you. Again, you don't have to worry about the colors. Maybe you want to change the color of your font. In this case, you can actually head over here to your text color and you will actually see your palette colors right up here as the very first colors available. So that'll be an easy place to go and just grab those colors. Again, the buttons are easy to change as well. If there's one that's here, you can simply change the style and choose the, the color that you want from the dropdown because you have gone through and modified those buttons. There's also a button on your lead form. So that's going to be. So that's going to be, here we go, button style. And again, you can see all of those buttons here that you can choose from. And um, as you can tell right now, if we were to preview. Right here, if we click, um, I don't think that this button is clickable. Let's see. There we go. So you see, there's this blue one. If we wanted that to look different, then we could obviously come over here and maybe change this to our green. And then when we view this again. You can see that that changes, right? And so it stays within your color palette as you have selected that on your site. Now, if you are going to say create a blog post, you want to make sure that you're utilizing the same color palette. So what do we do? We're going to create a blog post. Let me see, it's blog featured image is the template that I have in here. So we'll go and grab our template and then we can go in and make changes, right? So here's the uh background color. I don't want that yellow. I'm going to go to my brand palette. And I'm going to make it this deep navy. And maybe in this one, I will use this gray and then I'll swap these out. Swap the color of the font out, right? So you see how we are just using our color palette and only our color palette uh to. Set this up. Because that's going to be the most um attractive way to go about uh displaying your brand, right? So I'm just going to go into each of these and I'm going to. Swap out the colors. Right? So now you're actually creating these um visual cues with your brand. So that every time you show up, they're seeing those same combinations of colors. Now, one of the things that I would encourage you to uh to take a look at is the sort of spectrum of of colors that you're using. And notice the ones that may be lighter in saturation. So if you are using like a super bright orange like this one, uh as well as maybe like a deeper blue. Uh, you want to make sure that you have some softer colors that you can utilize as background colors. Uh, so like this gray would be a good example of that, right? So that could be the background color of a section. Uh, and then of course, there's always white. White is always going to be um an important color for you to use. Uh, in most cases, uh that is going to be a standard background color for most websites. Uh, and of course, it's um, it's like that for a reason. It it not only is it simpler for you in terms of design, it's also easier on the eyes. Uh, and again, we don't want to have our our branding detract from our um, from our message. So you can see that I'm just going through here and updating this. Uh, so that everything is in keeping with that brand palette. So now when I release this blog post, uh this would actually be the image that I'm using as the featured image. And you'd be able to continue uh that really great uh sort of visual flow. Um, I actually saw a really great website um yesterday. I don't know if she's here on the call, uh but this is a good oiling website that I thought was done really beautifully. This is Terry's site. You can see that she's got this nice uh sort of peachy color uh with a teal. And that is used consistently here across uh the top. And she's using it throughout the entire site, right? So there again is that peach color, uh there's that darker teal color and that same color is here. Here, right? So we have a lot of visual consistency. And you can see that she has this sort of tan color in her palette as well. It does create a a sort of break in the visual flow without being distracting. So this is actually a really great example of introducing a light neutral into your palette. Um, what when you have a a couple of brighter contrasting colors like this teal and peach that you see here. Um, I'm particularly impressed with how uh she's got her blog set up here. You can actually see the um, the blog featured images. This is a great example of utilization of her color palette in a really beautiful way. So if we actually go over to her blog. Again, you can see a repeat of those same visual themes. And the colors are great. And again, because we've got this higher contrast between this sort of um peachy color and the teal. Uh, there is a lot of white here that gives the eye a break, right? Just looks so very nice. And so this is just a fantastic example of someone who is utilizing uh those nice bold colors in a clever way. So I'm very excited to see if you guys have any questions. If you want to maybe look at uh some color palettes together, if you want some feedback on yours or how you're using it. Feel free to uh let me know in the Q and A, head over into the Q and A and ask away. Uh, let me see if we have, let me see, I don't think, we don't have anyone signed up for a live review. Uh, but the floor is absolutely open. If you would like some feedback on something that you're working on on your site, I want to invite you to either um. Raise your hand uh or to um, or to just pop into the Q and A or the chat and let us know if you would like to look over yours together. Okay, all right, awesome. You guys have the um, the template link in the chat here. Uh, oh, there's, there's a question here about uh utilizing these brand colors at different plan levels and get oiling. So uh if you uh depending on the brand, the excuse me, depending on the plan level that you are on and get oiling. Uh, you may have limitations as to uh your branding, but we do have a branding add-on. So there is a a sort of branding package that allows more of this functionality for you. Uh, and again, it just makes things so much faster and easier. Instead of having to go in and modify something every single time. Uh, you know, so for instance, you know, I want to go manually change the color of this text. Uh, it's just not fun. So um, so definitely uh consider adding that on. If you are, I believe at basic, uh you don't have the full brand functionality. That is something that starts at premium and higher plans. Uh, but it is a very affordable add-on to a basic plan if you're just getting started with this. Um, Camelia, if you would like for me to demonstrate again, anything that I've already shown, uh feel free. I know sometimes I am a little fast and I could certainly uh repeat this to any of the things that I've shared. How do we find every button we need to change on our website and everything else? This seems like an endless hunt. Beth, you actually only need to go to that fonts and colors page. You don't need to go anywhere else. If you go to the fonts and colors page, you set your colors as your colors. And then you make sure that every one of the buttons beneath in that button section. Has a color assigned to it that's from your palette or like I showed with the red one is complimentary to your palette. Uh, then, once you've got those done, you're good to go. That's it. There is no hunt. Oh yeah, I was just showing you where you could go and make manual changes. So we do have sort of default buttons for different places on our site, right? So that dark blue one that comes standard when when you uh sign up for a good oiling account. That is going to automatically be on all of your lead forms on your pages, right? So if you have a pop-up form and somebody is going to press a button to to finish the signup process. It's automatically going to be that blue, but you do have that ability to go in and make that change manually to another color. That is in your buttons there. So do make sure that you change the buttons and then also maybe rename them. Uh, right? So even if it's called pink now, you want to make sure that if you're changing it to a teal or something like that, that you are calling it teal. Uh, so that you'll be able to see from its name in the dropdown, which one uh you want to use. How do you remove sections within a preset template? So a section in a template. I assume would maybe be like a page, a page template. Please let me know if it's something different. Uh, all you have to do, if you don't want a section, so maybe I don't want this blog section. Cause I'm not using the blog yet. You have two options. You could hide it. So just close these out and it'll all turn red. And nobody will see them. Or if you're certain, you're never going to use it, you don't want it, you can hit this little trash can and delete the section and you can do that. Uh, of course, in this case, I would do that for both. Okay, I change on the main page of buttons, the default buttons will change. Yes, that's right. Uh, so if you, so yes, if you go into your colors and fonts. Uh, and and you change all of your button colors. Those buttons will, of course, change color on all of the pages and everywhere else that you have buttons on your site. So the good news is, is that if you have been designing within your brand palette. It should look totally fine when you make that change. Uh, but if you are maybe trying to tighten up your visual branding, then what you would want to consider doing is um. You know, is is first getting your presets in order. So all of the colors on the color presets on the on the fonts and colors page and all of the button colors on that same page. Then you can go to your individual pages and modify uh which button you want to change. So it is i- if if you are going to be making some changes, like understand that those are going to be changes that you'll want to adjust across your site. Uh, but this would only really be a huge task if you are um rebranding with maybe dramatically different colors. Uh, than than where you started. Okay, Florence, you would like to have your page reviewed? Yeah, absolutely. Um, and Camelia says, are there suggestions on creating color schemes or what not to do? I yeah, I'll absolutely speak to that in a second. Florence, I let me see if I can find you easily. I believe I did. I think maybe. Um, Florence, can you let me know if you would like a review? Could you let me know the name of the account or the website name on your account so that I can pull that up? Cause I don't think that what I was just able to look up is yours. Um, I don't believe it is anyway. Beth says, I don't have my website really set up yet, so it's super helpful. Awesome. Have some brand colors in Canva, but not as many. So uh, three colors is perfectly fine. It's less is more. Uh, really, all you're trying to do with brand colors is to add an additional visual identifier. So when somebody sees a post, they know it's yours. When somebody, you know, goes to your website, there's a continuous sort of synchronous experience. Where when they go from one page to the next, when they go from your homepage to your blog, or if they go from your Instagram to your website. They're going to have that same experience. There's no disruption there. We're creating flow there. Speaking of flow, let me pull you up here. Thank you for clarifying. And I I'll pull up your uh your site here real quick. Beautiful. All right, found you. Okay. All right. So the very first thing uh that I'm seeing here is that we want to really maybe edit our menu down just a bit. Um, there's a lot here. And I think it would be beneficial to maybe organize uh into narrower uh sort of top level categories. Uh, that's going to keep your your site from uh kind of being covered up by this very large menu bar here. Uh, and then the other thing that I would encourage you to maybe do is unless you are able to narrow down. Your um, your top level menu items to maybe two or three, maybe four. Uh, I would encourage you to maybe not use buttons for every single one of these uh of of these items as well. Because that is, it's it's creating a lot of visual clutter there. And it's also functionally uh kind of disrupting your ability to kind of scroll through the site. Cause you see how much real estate it takes up now, cause it's so large, right? Uh, so so that's, that's what I I would to start. Uh, and actually, if if you're open to it, um, pop your hand up for me, Flo. And um, I would be happy to, if you're open, uh to bring you out to uh to to chat. So we can talk through this. There we go. You should be able to unmute and talk directly.
Got it.
Hey, all right. Okay, so um, let me see, we've got. This is great. So this you, this is your built-in theme. And so this is your your my story and photo. That's awesome. Um, let's go to, let me see, are there any other places? So we've got a product guide. That's the on Young Living site. Yeah. So tell me more about um, about how you're wanting to use your site and any kind of uh, you know, specific guidance that you might be looking for.
Uh, basically give out the address and tell people to go to the site and explore. Um, I'm looking to build my Young Living. Um, brand or my own brand and increase my Young Living um team.
Okay.
And that one is uh, it's a book I wrote on my husband who passed and I just needed to send some people there.
Hmm.
So if if that's kind of like a separate thing.
Got you.
And I see what you're saying about the menu and I probably should do dropdown menus for most of that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that would, that would definitely be the recommendation. I think um, the the way that we can kind of figure out what that looks like for you. Uh, is to maybe first think about um, you know, when you are sending people to your website. What are the main purposes that you are are sort of using? So if you're saying, go to my website and look for, like what what are you generally most of the time having people do?
I want people to be able to explore what Young Living offers. And then I want to tell them how to join my team and what 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 I can offer them.
Got you. Okay. Okay, uh, and in terms of here, let me see. So you have, so there's a product guide uh that's on Young Living. This um. You've got a couple of pages, awesome, where you're talking about diffusers and recipes. Um, are you actively blogging?
Not yet. I have done some blogs and I want to do more. I've just been concentrating on different things in my life right now.
Okay, got you, got you. So I do want to make sure that this is correct though, because I noticed that this link. Is going to. Let me see. Okay, blog archive. Great. Huh, interesting. Um. But it's working, right? Okay, perfect. Yeah. So here's what the the main thing that I would do flow is just is edit the menu. Uh, and then continue on with uh, you know, with with exactly what you're doing, adding things as you need them. So what I would, what I would maybe consider doing here is creating a menu that is a learn menu. Or maybe a learn from flow or something like that. Uh, and maybe that would be, maybe you put the blog underneath there. Uh, you put the um, you know, diffusers and recipes. Um, let's see, what's the, what's new? Oh, this actually, this, this, if you did something like this, this would be great to have just in your events. If you plan to do events.
I do. It's just been, I've had other things in my life going on. That's all.
Yeah. Um, yeah. And then let me see. Yeah. So I would just think about, uh, just make a list, right? And and I think one of the better ways that you could actually look at doing this is maybe like an outline. So if you start an outline and you say, um, people are going to come to my website to learn. Uh, and they're going to come to my website to shop, for instance. And then they may also choose to explore uh Young Living. So learn, I would put your blog. I would put events when you eventually do events. Uh, I would maybe put um, you know, your what's, what's happening, your diffusers and recipes. Uh, and maybe even the 14-day reset. And then um, on in the other menu item, uh where you could say explore Young Living, you could put opportunity. You could put shop, you could put um, you know, the product guide. You know, you could put all of that information in there, right? Um, and and this page here, uh, what you might consider doing is maybe creating an about page for you. And then you could have, you know, an about menu that goes to a page that's about flow. And then this great page that's about your husband's musical legacy and that could be its own. So then you would have uh about and that would have those two things. You would have learn and that would have the blog and these other resources. And then there would be maybe explore Young Living. Uh, because that is a primary thing that you are communicating people with about and and sending to your website. And so then all of these additional Young Living things can be in that dropdown. And if you have just those three things, you could also just have a contact me button like that. And you could keep these all as buttons, because there's just four of them. And then everything else is a dropdown beneath them. And then everything else is a dropdown beneath them. Does that make sense?
Yeah, just technically doing them. Technically pressing the right buttons.
Yeah, got you. So let's, let's see what we can do here. So the product guide. Is going to. The Young Living Library. Okay, and, and for what it's worth, you, you know that the product guide is actually on this page, if they scroll down. Right here.
Okay.
Yeah, if you, if you wanted, you, you could just, you know, allow this just to be, to be on the page. Unless, again, you know, there is a strategy that you are employing that, you know, is to send people to a product guide. Because we do want them to actually scroll down the page and explore what's here and.
We can take that button out of there then. Just take it out.
Okay. Okay, uh, and also your um, your name on your website um. Over here, when they click here, this takes them home on your website as well. So you actually don't have to have home uh as a menu item either. So maybe here. Bye-bye. Alright, so we'll call this one, uh, we'll call this one learn. Uh, and we're going to uh not link anything, because it is just a menu. So in our learn menu, we've got our fourteen day reset, we've got diffusers, we've got what's happening, we'll add the blog to this. And so we can delete the blog as a top level one. Um, this we will um, we'll put under the explore Young Living. Okay. So we'll call this one. Explore Young Living. Uh, and this one will go to, this will be a, just a menu. And then we will modify these. So this will be get started. Because that's your signup link. Uh, and then we can. Maybe have them shop. So this would be uh starter bundles. And then again, there's lots of other things that we can include here. Maybe there's uh the opportunity. Let's see. Any of you want to talk about, these are the vitality oils, so I will. I will delete this. And then we could even put that into the menu here, so this will be. Vitality oils, and we can put the link in here. Oops, that's not what I meant to do at all. Oops, this is explore.
Sounds just like me. Don't worry about it.
It happens to me all the time, don't worry. Alright, here we go. Uh, so here we're going to. Send them to a link. This will be, there we go. So we'll say shop. Vitality oils. Perfect. Alright, um, shop with Young Living. Alright, so we've already got both of those in our other menu, so we're good to go on that one. And what, oh, what is this special offer? Oh, book, this is the book.
Yeah, that was like, when I first published it, I was. Uh, telling them I would order them a book, sign it, and then mail it to them.
Got you. Okay, fantastic. So this will be um. We'll say get the book.
Oh, cool, yeah.
Yeah, how about that? Um, and we don't need this here. Um. We'll move that one down. And yeah, since this one is going to be linking to that page on your site. We should be good. So let's go see what it looks like now. There we go, and I think we can actually remove, oh wait. About me. Okay, we don't necessarily need. How about we call this resources and? Hmm, do you want to keep this menu here?
I don't, not married to the location, but I'd like them to be able to drag down and pick something.
Perfect. Alright, so then we're, let's, let's change this to uh, what we'll call this um. Uh, resources.
Okay.
Yeah. There you go. So now it's going to be a little less busy and they can actually see. You know, the pages and so on, uh, when you're there, so. Yeah, that's um. I think that's a bit better, right? Yeah.
Much better, wow, you're a whiz.
Well, thanks for coming out, Flo. I hope that was helpful to you today.
Extremely, saved me about ten hours.
Awesome, thanks for coming out. Okay, uh, let me see, uh, are there, okay, so let's speak to this uh as well, Camelia, your question. Suggestions on creating color schemes, whatnot to do. Uh, so. My whatnot to do is to do too much, right? Edit yourself. If, if there's a lot. Ask yourself what can you remove. Uh, editing is going to be uh the most important thing that you can do. Now, if you love vibrant colors and you want to have lots of vibrant colors on your site. I'm not saying that you can't. You just need to use them in balance, so um, let me see. If I can find an example for you of someone who does use a ton of color. Uh, but that does a really nice job with it. Uh, and she is, again, she's very, very, very color forward. Um. So, here's Jill. You guys have met Jill in a weekly work session before, and she is very bright, very vibrant, lots of rainbow, everything, everywhere. Uh, so we do have lots of colors. Um. And you can kind of see that we're using, in her case, gradients. Which is very cool. Um, but there is, it's, it's visually, it's very bright, it's very bold, it's very in your face, but she. That's her brand, like that's, she, she is super into that. And also she brands vibrant, right? So vibrant is a huge part of how she is communicating uh her brand's values, her personal values, right? And so you'll find a splash of vibrant colors all over her site, and it's very consistent. Is the thing. Um, and so long as you are consistent, so if we go into, say for instance. On her blog, you can see that she does have this um, this blue color is everywhere, this uh orange color is everywhere. Uh, but then in the logos that she creates, if we go um. Let me go see what else she has on her site here. You can see, there we go, there's a nice bright purple button. There's her sort of peachy color, there's a green. So again, you do have uh options to use lots of colors. But one of the things I, I want to, I, I hope that you noticed, is that she uses a lot of white backgrounds. Right? And sometimes, not often, she'll use a dark, dark gray uh background, like one would use a white background. So. Make sure that if you are using contrasting, high contrast, bright colors, like she's doing, that you have lots of white background. Right? Uh, or that you have lots of black background with just white text. So keep it black-whites if you're going to be high color. And um, and she is living on the edge in terms of the number of colors that she's using. Going to say that out there, how French she is, that, that is on the absolute higher end. But again, the way that she's using them uh is strategic. She wants all the colors of the rainbow, because vibrant is the brand for her. Uh, and so she is introducing those, but she's not making your eyes tired in the process. And yes, we do love Jill. We absolutely love Jill. If you guys went through her vibrant vendor events, that was a phenomenal, phenomenal course. Uh, that she is still selling, and you guys should definitely check out if you are doing events. Uh, and check out the replay on our YouTube channel from uh the call that we had with her about. Her vendor event strategy. Um. Lynn, is there something that you would like for me to show again? I would be more than happy to show and even slow down a great deal. Um, I did want to uh for um, for a friend who needed the uh. The, the menu update, um, wanted to make sure that we got that done. So I did move a little quickly, uh, but uh, let me know when, i- uh, Lynn, is there something specific that you'd like for me to show? Uh, let me see, how do you add new pages to main headers, so it presents as a dropdown under each menu header? Is that it? Okay, perfect. So let's go, uh, I'll show you. Uh, and we'll go to. Um, actually, bear with me just a second, I'm going to pop out of. This account and into the Jane one. Okay. Okay, so first, let's take a look at the um. The published version of the site. So Jane has about. She's got learn, where she has a dropdown. She's got members, where there's a dropdown. She's got a call to action here, book a call. And she's got an events button. So what I'm going to do is go over to our menu. And I'll show you how this was created. So. You can see again, and we'll, we'll sort of correlate these. This is just linking to a URL. Right? Because if we click this, it just goes to a URL. Here, under this one, this doesn't go anywhere except a dropdown. And those are items, so this is, so these are technically. This is all a menu, right? And these are also menus. And these are menu items. Alright, so. Menu, learn. Menu item, blog, gardening journal, et cetera, right? And we could add more. So if you wanted to create a, a dropdown from scratch. You're going to create a menu header. That's what these are. Menu header. Up here, menu item. In the dropdown. So we'll add a menu header. And this is going to just have header text, because I don't want this to be clickable. If you have a dropdown menu, it's, doesn't really make a lot of sense for the menu header to be clickable. Because we want them to drop down and choose one of the items from the dropdown menu, right? So, uh, we'll call this uh, uh, work with, uh, with Jane. Maybe, uh, actually, no, let's, let's do the Young Living one. So we'll say, uh. We're, we're going to make this a Young Living menu dropdown. So the text is going to be Young Living, there's no link. The header style is just going to be a link header style, and that's just like this. Because our other option would be to use one of our buttons, which I've done. In these other examples. So I'm going to use the link header style. And I'm going to hit done, and I'm going to go ahead and save this and show you exactly what it looks like. So here's Young Living. But it doesn't go anywhere. Because there's no, there's nothing in it, right? This doesn't go anywhere at all. So. Now we need to add items to this menu. So add an item. And then you get to choose what you want to add. So here, we could link to a website page. In this case, um. That would be a page from your website. So you would actually pick from your dropdown. Uh, so here's the fourteen day reset, and I'm going to name it fourteen day reset. I'm going to hit done. I'm going to save it, and then we can go take a look over here, and you can see that this now will take us to the fourteen day reset page on Jane's website. Now, I want to add more to this Young Living dropdown. I'm going to add another item. Now, I want to. Come down here to add a signup link. Because these are actually built in, and you don't have to create these resources. So here's the Young Living signup link. And I'm going to call it get started. And now again, if I save. And we come back over here and look at the website again. This will take us to, directly to the Young Living website with the um. With the, uh, with your Young Living member number attached. If I want to add another item to this menu, maybe I want to have them explore the starter kits. So I'll select that. I'll call this starter kits, kids, kids. Uh, there we go. Uh, and maybe I want to add another website entirely. Maybe there is, um, and this was actually something that our friend Flo did. Uh, I'm going to search for um. Uh, vitality. And then I can copy the link up here. You would want to make sure that you turn this into a leaf link. Uh, if you're going to add it to your, your website like this, but you can go to website link. Can paste that in. Obviously, again, make sure that you've got this uh deep linked. Uh, so that you're actually getting credit for the sale. Uh, but uh, I'll put vitality oils. There we go. Uh, Donna says, what's the difference between click and open? I'm not sure I understand. The question. A leaf link, uh, I'll show you that here just a second. Uh, here, and I'll just show you. Hopefully, you feel. More comfortable with this now. Uh, now we have a dropdown, our Young Living dropdown menu has all of these things, right? Now, a leaf link, I'll go through this pretty quickly here. Um, we'll do this uh like we're writing an email. So I'm going to send an email out, and I want to um. I want to attach a link to Young Living, to their website. But if somebody clicks, if they're not my customer, if they click something and they want to add it to their cart or set up a loyalty order, I want them to be my customer. So we're going to use our leaf link. Where is our leaf link? Did we ever figure out where that went, Greg? More miscellaneous, here it is. Alright, so more miscellaneous, it's these three dots. You can do this, and now I'm in email right now, but you can also use this. Um, basically anywhere else, there's an editor. Anytime you're in an editor and you see these three dots, you hit more miscellaneous and you click this leaf. So you can insert a Young Living link with your member number attached. So here, I'm going to paste that vitality, I search for vitality oils on the Young Living website. So I put that in there, and now the sponsor ID and enroller ID is attached to the link here. So I could go and copy this link. So I'm going to copy the link, and I'll head back over to my menu. And now that link that I have saved in my menu is going to give me that credit. So let me go find it. Here we go, vitality oils. So instead of just having this, you see where it says search term vitality? They're just going to go to the Young Living website and search vitality, and if they sign up, they are effectively an orphan, or they're going to be assigned to somebody else. Right? So, but if I do this, and I paste, sorry, it's jumping around, uh, if I paste that leaf link. It attaches this code to the end of it. And so now, when somebody goes to the website. Let me save this. When they go to the website. After clicking this link, or really any of these links that we have here, because these are all coded to you. Um, when they go here, and they add something to cart, you can actually see that that. Information is carried over, right? So if they go and they add, uh, they create a loyalty order with cilantro vitality here. They are going to become your customer, because they're signing up with your link. Oh, the difference between click and open in emails, Donna, is um, the number of people who opened an email. Versus the number of people who clicked a link inside the email. So that's going to be the difference there in the, the, the tracking uh metrics that you have in your system. Okay, I really hope that that, Lynn, was that, did that help? Was that slow enough? Um, okay, perfect. Good, good, good. I hope you feel great about that, and, and you are able to go and make the menu of your dreams today. Alright, we will be back here uh same time next week. Uh, really appreciate you guys sticking around and being incredible. Uh, let us know what you want to learn next, and we will uh see you next time. Take care, everybody.